Did you have a revised agenda?
No.
No, I just got one.
Just do the electronic one.
Is there no agenda?
Well, no, there was two. There's two here, but I don't see anything different. Okay, there was just two extra sitting here.
We're on air.
Okay, okay. The light is on and we are ready to get started here, folks. So, good evening, everyone, and I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, a roll call, please.
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Yes.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Canopa. Here. Okay. On our agenda this evening, we do have a couple proclamations. And with that, though, I'm going to move first our special presentation. So, for the Fire Department Life Saving Award, since we've got some firefighters here, and just in case they are on duty, we want to make sure they don't get a call before these awards take place, so I can do the proclamations afterwards. Chief Wooten, so, welcome.
Mayor, council staff, thank you very much. If I could have Todd Zimmerman and Kimberly Cooper, please, come up. And we're going to have you stand right here, so the camera can come and look right down on them. So, allow me to introduce Todd Zimmerman and Kimberly Cooper. And let me start by telling you, on September 15th of this summer, there was a car accident that occurred on 53rd Avenue. A car that was driven by a teenager and had another teenager inside it. The car struck a tree, and there was significant damage to the vehicle, to the point that both patients were trapped and unable to get out. Meanwhile, the car starts to catch fire. Well, Ms. Kimberly Cooper hears the crash. She lives in the neighborhood. She calls 911. And then, while that is happening, Mr. Zimmerman is out for a walk with his dog, I'm told, and sees the accident happen. Ms. Cooper tells Mr. Zimmerman, "Hey, I have a fire extinguisher. Do you want it?" And Mr. Zimmerman then goes and extinguishes the fire with the two people that are still trapped inside of the car. And I'll tell you, from talking to the crews, there is no way those two people were going to be able to get out of that car on their own. And the car was eventually going to catch fire. So, with that being said, I'd like to start out by recognizing Ms. Cooper with...
Get this out here?
Need that third hand.
I do need a third hand. All right, so, Ms. Cooper, we'd like to offer you a certificate of appreciation and a commemorative coin for your preparedness and quick thinking when you provided Mr. Zimmerman the fire extinguisher. So, let me give you that, and then reach right in here and give you one of our commemorative Fire Department coins. And then, for you, Mr. Zimmerman, we would like to recognize you with the Civilian Life Saving Award for risking yourself and approaching the car and extinguishing the fire, which, according to the crews who are in the back of the room, they undoubtedly said that you saved their lives. So, I'd like to give you this award. All right. Ladies and gentlemen?
Would they like to say a few words? That is so wonderful. Wonderful of you, and just that quick reaction. And I tell you, those folks were really blessed that the two of you were there. So, yeah, that had to been just a very scary situation. And, yep, thank you so much. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay. We do have a couple proclamations. And this is our Albany Charitable Toy Run Day, December 1st, 2019. Whereas, Association for Motorcyclists of Oregon have been sponsoring the Albany Charitable Toy Run since 1984 to gather together members of the motorcycle groups, car clubs, and interested individuals to provide toys to needy families. And whereas, there are families with children in the Albany area that will not enjoy a full Christmas due to financial hardship. And whereas, a group of people continuing the tradition of having the annual toy run because of all the good work and fellowship. And whereas, businesses and groups around the area help to sponsor the toy runs, such as the American Legion Post 10, Walmart, Road Maggots, Christian Motorcycle Riders, The Cutting Room, and Pride Printing Company. And whereas, on December 1st, 2019, the toy run and parade will again be conducted with a gathering at the Walmart parking lot and a ride to the American Legion Post 10 for gift distribution and lunch. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2019, as the Albany Charitable Toy Run Day, and urge all citizens of Albany to recognize that day as a time of sharing and giving by motorcyclists and others to be aware of their motorcycles on our streets and highways while they ride to provide a happier holiday season to families and children. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 20th day of November, 2019. And Mr. Bill Root, would you like to come forward and say a few words about the annual event and the many years you have been, you know, helping to volunteer for this event, too? We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Bill Root. I'm the chairman of the Albany Toy Run Committee. Used to be AMO. I got to looking the other day, just because I'm getting all my stuff together, and wondering just how long have I been involved in the toy run? So, I got my Santa pin and my earbars, and my first earbar was the year 2000. So, this is the 20th anniversary for being involved with the toy run. And that first toy run, that's the only time I was ever allowed to ride in the parade from the beginning to the end. After that, I joined AMO, and from that time on, I was either road guard or working as a cleanup crew or taking toys to the Eagles or something, so I never got to ride again. And that's happened that way continually. I even set up the ride that we have now, but I've never been able to ride in the parade. But, last year, we did something different. We partnered with the American Legion. And there was a couple of things that stick with me, probably will for the rest of my life. We were able, with the help of the American Legion, to donate toys to over 1,000 children here in the Albany area. In addition, we donated toys to over 100 children. Then Paradise, California, hopefully that would help brighten their Christmas a little bit. I knew it was going to be a terrible time for them.
That's wonderful.
This is a time of the year for everybody, especially now, gives thanks for everything that they have for themselves. But there's a lot of children out there that don't have much, and we help do whatever we can to help them see a brighter Christmas and have a... And there's no child anywhere that should not get a toy for Christmas.
Exactly. Exactly. Wonderful. Thank you, Bill. Thank you so much. Okay, our next proclamation is Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2019. Whereas, Albany celebrates our community's small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for citizens. And whereas, the City of Albany supports the efforts of local small businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in our community. Whereas, Small Business Saturday is a nationwide campaign to cultivate business for small merchants on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas, Small Business Saturday will stimulate economic growth locally for small merchants by following in the tradition of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, two of the busiest shopping days of the year. And whereas, we encourage citizens to consider shopping small merchants on Small Business Saturday as a way to boost the local economy and support and strengthen our small business community. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, to be Small Business Saturday, and encourage the residents of Albany to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 20th day of November, 2019. And I don't see Lisa Grotto here from our executive director of Albany Downtown Association, so usually she... I don't know if she... Didn't remind her that this proclamation was this evening, because she probably would have wanted to say a few words. But the following day will be the Downtown Twice Around Christmas Parade will be that day, the same day as the toy run. So, I do know Lisa's busy getting things ready for Christmas. I see that the snowflakes along the city streets are going to be putting up on the poles.
Some lights up, too.
And some lights. And, yep, I think she said Monday is the Christmas tree will be coming, so, yeah, I hope everyone's able to attend. That'll be a nice weekend. Okay, all right. This care proclamation. Next is Business from the Public. I do know we have a person that's going to be on the phone, but before that, is there anybody here that would like to bring an item forward this evening to the council? Okay, not see anyone, then.
So, Mayor, we have Mr. Collins joining us through the phone, and I just distributed a couple documents that he sent through email that wanted the council to have on the dais.
Mayor, can you ask him a few things? Mr. Collins, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. It's a little static. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Well, if you are ready for me to go, I'll begin. I want to be cognizant of everybody's time. I want to thank you all for having me here, talking about this issue a little bit tonight. I have been working in nine different states on this issue.
So, Mr. Collins.
Because Coalition Against Bigger Trucks, the group that I'm working with, we are very, very small.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins, can you state your name and where you are, please?
Sure, yeah. Josh Collins, Regional Director, Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. I'm based out of Chicago. I cover, however, nine different states. I have a big chunk of the Midwest, and I have now the entire West Coast and some of the Southwest, with the exception of Washington State. So, that is my background. A little bit about me. And part of the reason I cover so many spaces is we're very, very small. This is a very niche issue, as you might imagine. There's six of us that cover 40 different states, so a lot to do, and, you know, I'm trying to do a lot of outreach in Oregon, you know, in cities and towns of all sizes. So, wanted to thank you again. Just to give you a little bit of background, again, about our organization, we're a nonprofit grassroots organization. We work in 40 different states with over 3,000 individuals and organizations. Those organizations vary, anything from law enforcement to local government, public works directors and engineers, because we, you know, we talk about this issue in terms of impact to infrastructure, roads and bridges and that sort of thing. And we have one simple overall goal. The goal is, and the message is, no heavier, bigger, commercial trucks. Basically, at the end of the day, what we're asking for is just to leave things alone. And to give you a little bit of context, this is... What we are looking at now is something that's being pushed at the federal level, right? So, it's... Both of the proposals are kind of broad sweeping proposals that would affect every state. So, one question that comes up a lot is, where do you get your funding? And we're very forthcoming about this. While we do get a portion of our funding from the freight rail industry, which obviously has concerns about diversion of freight rail back onto the roads, we also get funding from the trucking industry as well. And, you know, I don't speak for them, and I try to not go too much into their case for it. It's a little different than ours. But, you know, they look at this from a financial perspective, particularly of small and medium-sized trucking companies who, you know, some of these basically big, sweeping federal changes could actually hurt them. So, for instance, we work with the Truck Carriers Association, OIDA. OIDA represents the very, very small trucking, like mom and pop trucking companies, who are both on our coalition and opposed to these bigger truck proposals. The big part of our coalition, though, is law enforcement. You know, at the national level, we work with the National Sheriff's Association, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the NPO, the Combined Law Enforcement Association. And then, obviously, we have, you know, cities and county groups across the country, including National League of Cities and NACO, that, you know, where we talk about the impact, not just on infrastructure, but also safety in general. And most of this, you can kind of follow along with the flag. The big question I would get, who is it that wants bigger trucks? And, you know, a lot of people off the bat kind of assume it's the trucking industry in general, right? The entire trucking industry. Again, trucking industry's kind of divided on this. And, you know, with these two proposals I'm going to talk about, it really is a handful of your biggest mega corporate shippers and some particular industries that, you know, carry really heavy trucks, so they want to carry more. That's kind of who is on the other side of this, you know, if you're wondering about that. I think you have a handbook here, and just let me know if you've got this. I don't know how big it is, but there's a map that shows where 91-foot doubles would run. And, you know, it's probably really small. It's kind of hard to see. I've been working and working and trying to get a more detailed map for each of the states I work in. But basically, what you see there is a map of all the roads, highways, they can be interstates, non-interstates, a lot of them are state highways, that the proposal for longer double-trailer trucks, all the roads that they would be allowing. Now, this proposal is basically... When you're out, you know, you see most of them on the interstates, but sometimes you see them on, you know, US 20 or state highways. This proposal is basically just to make each of these trucks even longer. Each of the trailers right now, what you see out there right now is 28-foot. The proposal is to add on five feet to each of those trailers. That is the proposal for the longer trucks. You know, one of the issues that comes up a lot, and one of our challenges when we talk about this issue, people tend to think, a lot of times, that, hey, you know, these big trucks, that they're just creatures of the interstate, right? They're... You can only find them on the interstate. Well, I mean, the truth is that there's no trip by, you know, one of these big trucks that ever starts and ends on the interstate. Frequently, when doing deliveries, sometimes when the GPS tells them to go a different way, they end up on local roads. And that's part of the reason we reach out to, you know, cities and counties and towns, you know, throughout the state, just to remind them that, hey, you know, if this stuff passes, you could very well see these bigger trucks coming through. And in some communities, that presents more of an issue than others, but that's, you know, that's the first big proposal. The second one, and, you know, this is where the single trailer truck, you probably have a little visual description of that. This is just the regular one-trailer truck that you see out on the road. What's being proposed is a nationwide weight increase. Right now, the federal maximum for trucks, these trucks on the interstate, is 80,000 pounds. The proposal is to bring this up to 91,000 pounds across the board. So, that represents a ton of concerns. I'll get into it in a second, with safety and damage to infrastructure. But I will say this about Oregon, you guys are a little different in that you guys already kind of have this exposure to big trucks, because you're one of the states where the triples are allowed. I know you see those on I-5. You know, and you have higher truck weights in general. That was something that Congress secured for them. I think it's 105,000. So, you guys already have big trucks on the road. So, another question I get is, you know, so if we already see bigger trucks, why does this matter as much? One of the issues with the doubles is, well, the doubles will get bigger. You know, you're not seeing the double 33s yet. You're seeing the double 28. So, you know, of all the doubles that you have on the road, you probably have more of those than the triples. You're going to see those getting longer. That, you know, that causes a lot of safety concerns, and I'll kind of get into some of the big ones here, and why we work with law enforcement. One of the safety issues with the... One of the biggest ones with the longer doubles is stopping distance. There was a big report, a big study done by the US Department of Transportation on the impact of heavier, longer trucks. Up to this date, it has been the most comprehensive study, and, you know, it was done with non-industry sources, so they were only able to do testing in certain states. But what they found about the double trailer trucks, the longer double trailer trucks that are being proposed, is a longer stopping distance. You know, they came up with 22... It would take an additional 22 feet to stop one of these longer double compared to the size of the doubles that we have on the road today. 22 feet, you know, that doesn't sound like a ton, but when you're thinking about going at speeds 55 and above, you know, and you're slamming on it, and these big trucks are slamming on the brakes, that could be the difference between a near miss and a rear-end collision. You know, a rear-end collision 55 or over, those involve a lot of fatalities. So, that's a huge...
Josh, this is Peter Trote, City Manager. You might want to get to the ask that you're going to make for the council, and give them an opportunity to ask questions about why you're asking that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of stuff here, so let me try to speed through a little bit. With the second one, with the national weight increase, this is really about stability of trucks. And the other thing they found in the report for that is, the states they looked at, where there are already heavier truck weights, they found increased crash involvement rates when you compare a heavier truck to an 80,000-pound truck. So, that's obviously a big thing for law enforcement, too. Let me fire through to the end, and try to talk about the work we do and the ask. Basically, what we do is just outreach on this issue. We try to connect local communities, law enforcement, fire and EMS, you know, all groups that kind of have a stake in this, to the congressional delegation, basically saying, hey, we know this issue has come up before, and it was voted down, by the way. Both of these were voted down in 2015, and the recommendation after the study was done from the US DOT was, don't make any changes. You know, we're just not in a place where we can handle this, and there are too many safety concerns. These are still being pushed in DC. And what we do as a grassroots group is basically just getting our partners in cities and towns and counties and sheriffs and police chiefs, just to do letters of concern to the congressional delegation about this. It's been very effective before. It... This is an issue most people just generally don't know anything about. Every polling that's been done has showed that, I mean, most people on the road are already kind of nervous around big trucks, knowing that there would be even heavier and even longer ones. Not something that's generally... Most people are comfortable with. But one of the things I've done is I've worked to create a draft letter, and I sent it over to Peter. Peter, I think you have it.
I do. And they have a copy of a letter in front of them as well. So, is what you're asking for is the council to consider signing off on a letter like that?
Sure, yeah. Reviewing it, and basically what we do is just get it over to the delegation, and, you know, they're able to take more notice of this issue. And one thing I want to mention, the reason why these are so important, this is not... These proposals are not something that are going to come up as standalone bills and have three weeks of hearings and that sort of thing. In 2015, when they came up, they came up as amendments attached on to the Bigger Fast Act, which is the funding bill for infrastructure. We had about 48 hours' notice. And again, we're really, really small. So, that's kind of why we work throughout the year, trying to get these letters of concern, you know, over to the offices. And frankly, it just raises awareness and it reminds them of some of the things they found in the study. And as you... You know, if everybody has a copy, you can see, I really try to localize these and talk about routes, you know, and areas where you see more truck traffic and where that could be a problem. So, good that everybody has a copy.
So, I think they get an idea from that letter. Can I offer to have them ask any questions they might have of you?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, fire away.
Okay, all right. Council, do you have any questions of Mr. Collins?
No.
Okay. And he has requested if you wanted to submit a letter. Is that something that you are interested in?
I think we need to take it under advisement.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, so, Mr. Collins, the council will just take it under advisement at this time. Okay?
Okay.
We thank you so much for the great information you gave us.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
All right, take it easy.
Take it easy.
Okay, all right. That was it from Business from the Public. And next, council, you have... This is approval of a permit. This is on page five. This would be the Waste Non-Connection Permit for the First Christian Church. The permit would be start date October 20th of this year till October 19th of next year. Questions of staff or what would you like to do with this item?
Is there a staff report, a staff recommendation? This doesn't even look like a city form, so I guess I need a little more information.
It is a brand-new city form. At the last... The August 28th council meeting, you instructed us to put together an application form. There aren't that many bits of information that are needed to fill out the form, so it's quite simple. In reference to the... For the explanation of the request, you'll see that it says, "Refer to council minutes."
Sure.
To summarize those council minutes, this request first came to the council on April 8th at a work session with a request from First Christian Church to have a portable toilet available to the public on church property. You asked the staff at that time to review the municipal code and regulations in other Oregon cities and bring back a report. We brought back a report at the August 28th council meeting, and as a result of research by police, public works, and the city manager's office, we determined that our code already provides for the council to issue a waste non-connection permit to allow such placement for up to a year with an option to renew. To our knowledge, the city has never issued such a permit. We had no application form, and no records of such permits have been found. You directed us to create a permit application, which we did, and the result is on the website. When the form was ready, we notified the church, and they returned an application on October 20th of this year. The copy of that application is in your packet and before you.
And I think we made suggestions to want to have criteria, but that council didn't want to go that route, wasn't it? To set a criteria on it, but the council said no. My memory is correct.
Because it was already in the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, my question is, is that will all the other places that have those porta-potties have to do something like this?
Well, no... That I... Well, yeah, they should. I mean, any business.
This is a waste non-connection permit.
Right.
So, if you're at a park, you don't have the ability to connect to a sewer. So, what I'm saying, but so would they have to... Would they retroact and we have to go back and do the same thing? Like at softball fields, they have those? No, no, no.
Because there's no available sewer.
There's no sanitary sewer.
There's available sewer here, so that's why it has to be a non-connection permit. Parks and ballfields, places like that, they don't have available sewer.
Okay, that's the clarification.
Yeah, that's the difference between the two.
Couple of questions. What's the cost of the permit?
There is no cost.
And that portable toilet's been there for over a year, has it not?
Correct.
The other question is, is from what I understand, there's individuals camping at the church... In the church parking lot at this time, which comes back to, if you build it, they will come. And I think that going down this route is, for lack of a better word, a slippery slope in that pretty soon they'll find out that they have the ability to camp there, in which they already have people camping there, because they have access to the facilities. And the other thing is, all the contractors, when they apply for a permit for construction, they have to have a portable toilet on site, and they pay a fee for that. There's a fee associated with it. So, I have a problem with that, not having a fee on this. Also, I have a problem that's been there for a year without a permit. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the fact that... And I have a problem with the fact that we're already, they're already seeing effects of having a toilet available to people and now they're parking or camping in the parking lot right near a childcare facility. So there's problems with that in my mind as, we've already moved them out from underneath the bridge and as soon as they find out that, hey, I can park, I can camp in this parking lot, we're going to have another problem. The reason they're in the parking lot is the police moved them off the street, risk of a ticket, and that's where they ended up. So I have problems with this from a myriad of issues.
So is it allowable to camp on the church parking lot or is that against the law?
I would think it's against the law. You have to have a, what is it, more of a conditional use permit if you're going to be running your church as a shelter?
Yeah. I'm okay, I mean, I'm okay with, you know, with the porta potty, but as Mike says, if they're camping there, I think that, I mean, I thought this was like for a facility for convenience, you know, for anyone. So can you tell me?
Yeah, and I can't point to the specific part, but our code does prohibit, you know, camping as a permanent, on a permanent basis to live on, to live somewhere. It's like, and you have to get a special permit or a code for an RV for housing and things like that. And that's on private property, so you would, you couldn't camp permanently on, in a parking lot, so.
Question?
RV or sleeping in a car?
I don't know. From what I understand, they're sleeping in a car. It's still camping.
It was our Monday night meeting, one of their parishioners brought it up, but I witnessed last, I think it was last spring, 10 people sleeping around the perimeter of the building of the church.
Question? Who is responsible for that? And there is, is it each individual person or is it if you allow someone to be there, you're responsible? I mean, I have issue with if it is and it can be an attractive nuisance, and that was one of the things that was brought up before. I have issue if there's no permit fee, but everyone else has to pay a permit fee, then whoever doesn't should pay a permit fee. I mean, that should, you know, I mean, we should treat everybody the same, so at least in a perfect world, we would.
The property owners are responsible for the activities that occur on the property. And if it's private property in this case, then they would be responsible for the activities that occur on that property. But I don't know if that's what you meant when you said it's responsible.
That's what I meant, yeah. If it's the individual or the...
Right. Sleeping in a vehicle is a little bit, and we've got our police chief here, if you want to ask a question, but sleeping in a vehicle is a little different. Sleeping in vehicles under the municipal code is prohibited on public streets. And if private property owners such as, I don't know if it's makeup, not using them for any particular reason, but like Walmart contacted APD and said there are people that were sleeping in their vehicles and said they could be, you know, told to move or in a park. On private property in a church, that could be a different story, though. I'm not, I'm not sure that we have the authority to say they can't sleep in a car overnight on their property, just like if somebody slept in their driveway in their car.
Do we know what the fee is for porta potties for contractors?
I don't know. That's part of the, the permits that they get for construction. I don't know what the fee is.
It's just part of your general permit fees, right?
I believe so.
There's not a separate line item.
I don't know how to break that out.
Would you say, Jeff?
Oh, I just, I don't know the answer, but I'd be surprised if we had a separate porta potty fee. I think it's just a condition of the permit and so thereby you're paying general permit fees for the activity and you're required to have it on your side. So it's thereby incorporated.
And it's also, there's also a quantity, you can only have, it's one porta potty for so many people per week. So it's based on the usage. And if the usage goes over, if the projected uses, you have to bring in more toilets on the job site. So how do we know how many people are using this facility and are they going over the recommended? OSHA requires that. And so the contractors are stuck with what they can and can't do. So are we going to allow that for everybody to do that?
Would contractors rather not have porta potties?
No, they're required by law to have them.
But I know, but would they rather not?
No, no. Then you got a mess. Everybody's leaving the job site to take care of business.
Yeah, well, yes.
But it's part of the permit.
The contractor may object to having to pay the cost.
Oh, heavens, no.
They don't pay anything.
No, heavens, no.
Well, that's nice.
A lot of the landscapers now, they have a trailer and they have a porta potty on the back that they tow around to the different job sites when they're mowing lawn or doing whatever.
We're first, I've seen that, too.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, Rich?
I'm of three different minds on this and I don't know which one. Problem I have with it is it's kind of outside the fold. It's a problem that the church has brought upon itself, but is part of their, part of their ministry. It can affect the people next door or not. It could have people, I mean, what bothers, what bothers me is the fact that now we have people showing up and staying there. You know, I don't have a big problem with having a porta potty there if you make it look like something other than a porta potty. I don't care, you know, if nobody's ox is being gored, it doesn't hurt much anything. The problem is what else does it do? And I don't see that we have any choices here. We can be the bad guy and say no, or we can be the good guy, or we can be, we can say yes and be the good guy and have other problems.
Well, we've already said yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. It's a, it's a...
Technically, we haven't said yes.
Well, we said we were going to say yes, is what we did.
Yes, we did.
Can, if there is a problem, say, the police say that there's, it creates more of a problem than it has been or whatever, is this a revocable permit?
It is.
Anything is?
I believe it is.
That's what, you know, if it causes problems, then I'd say definitely we have to have that, you know, in this, but other than that, I think we kind of play it by ear. It's for a year, we just see how it goes. And then also, it's kind of like ADUs, you know, there haven't been a whole bunch of people wanting those either, so maybe, I mean, I know of a couple of businesses that have them that I'm sure don't have a permit, but, so I don't think there's, I think we should just give it a try. Times have changed and...
Yeah, look at San Francisco, they've changed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Portland, Eugene.
I guess...
I'll go ahead and I'll go and make the motion that we go ahead and approve the thing.
I guess I would, as a connoisseur, I would ask that the church check out their parking lot on a regular basis and have people moved if they're there. Or give authorization to the police that if, if somebody is there, that you want to move, if they are camping, quote unquote.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, motions on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Or would you prefer a roll call, Allison?
It's a rolling one.
Okay, all right. I just didn't hear all ayes. Yeah. Okay, all right. Next item is on page six and seven. This is approving a contract increase for the water reclamation facility compost improvements. Stacy?
Good evening, mayor and councilors. So I was in front of council last month requesting amendment to Kennedy Jank's consulting's contract with the city to add design and construction engineering services in order to design and construct the dewatering improvements at the water reclamation facility. And tonight, staff is recommending that council approve an amendment to Kennedy Jank's contract to add the design and engineering services for compost improvements at the treatment plant. The city's current contract with Kennedy Jank's is for pre-design services. We set it up that way so that we could develop the project scope and the cost estimates for each project and then council has an opportunity to review costs before making the decision to move forward with the projects. The process that we currently use at the treatment plant to stabilize and reduce the solids just doesn't work. The plant produces unstabilized solids that we have to haul offsite and then pay to dispose of at a landfill. The composting improvements that was developed during the pre-design phase to stabilize the solids includes construction of a small-scale composting facility that will be able to reduce and stabilize up to 25% of the plant's current solids wastewater production. Starting with this small-scale operation, it gives us the opportunity to construct, first of all, construct the facility on-site, develop a beneficial reuse program and before we scale the production up. So this amendment does provide final design and construction engineering services for the recommended compost improvements that were developed during the pre-design phase. Staff has discussed this with the Joint Water Wastewater Management Committee and tonight we're recommending that you approve the amendment to go forward with the project.
Okay, questions of Stacy?
Money coming from?
Sewer capital and then the city of Millersburg also contributes 10%.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. Next is acceptance of grants. This is the Victims of Crime Act grant and Criminal Fine Accounts Grant. Chief, so this will be a resolution on page nine.
Good evening. This is to allow us to start a city victims assistance program and this is to fund one position for two-year period. It's funded at 100% through the grant and the position will be dependent on the grant being renewed after that time period. Basically, this person will work with the city prosecutor and the court system to help anyone who's a victim of a crime that falls into the category that our municipal court handles to help them through those processes and restitution.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Is it possible to hire this person out of the existing force, number of people in the police force? It looks like we're going to have to be cutting personnel everywhere in the citywide.
This isn't a sworn position, it's a civilian position.
So your answer is no.
There isn't anybody that would fall into that category. We'd have to go out for it that are qualified.
Okay, so here we are, hiring more people and the product we have to lay off.
Remember, it's a grant position. If the money from the grant goes away, the position goes away.
Oh, maybe, I'm perfectly aware of that, but so many times we hire people, we get a grant, we hire people, grant runs out, then what do you do?
Yeah, the position's advertised and it's grant-funded, so they know when they sign up for it, that if the grant doesn't get renewed, then there's no longer funding for that position. These are positions we had in my previous agency for years and was funded through the federal government and they've been funded for years, so I don't think that's anything that's going to go away.
Yeah, and I was just hoping that we could hire somebody that we presently have on payroll, but that'd be one less person we have to take off the payroll.
You remember last night at the conversation, we had Nancy Greenbaum asked about grant funding for various purposes and this exactly fits that picture.
I think Deschutes County has had this for a while and so we have some property there. So we were a victim of a homeless person squatter taking residency in our cabin and so we were contacted by their victim's assistance person. And so I'd asked them even about that program and because I thought this was very helpful as a victim, because they turned around and would contact when it came up for the trial, they asked for a letter, you know, wanting for restitution. I wouldn't have, never really pursued anything or to really know what to do, so it was very, very helpful. So I can see many of the victims, you know, in our community that would really find this as a valuable resource.
Lynn County has these positions, we just never had one here at the city.
Yeah, yeah, so I think this, because I think...
I'm in favor of doing it, I'm just looking for ways to keep from unemploying.
So, yep, okay. So counsel, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Great, thank you, chief.
Thanks.
All right. Next is adoption of the consent calendar and there's items on the first page and it is on the second page, all the way down through D. If there isn't any items that you would like to have pulled off this evening for discussion?
Let's get to the top.
I'll entertain a motion.
Did you need something pulled off?
No, I was just trying to get back to it so I can see what it says.
Okay.
Moved it up.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, this one is a modified term limit. This will be for the budget committee appointment. So this is on page 68 and Holly was going to be here this evening to kind of walk you through it, but she became ill.
And the memo itself is self-explanatory, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, so, which is by state law for the budget committee position, so we need to have them more staggered. So what I'll do is, since my appointment is, the term ends next month, then it'll just be for two years and then from there it's four years. So if the council's okay with this, we'll entertain a motion.
So what happens if a mayor gets unelected? I guess, does the appointee get to stay on during the term of the next mayor?
Well, every appoint, every person who serves on our board or commission is, if there's a new counselor coming on or a new mayor, that could always be subject to being changed.
Until the term expires and then...
So does the appointee expire or the mayor or the councilman?
No, it wouldn't be, it's staggered.
Appointees don't expire when the term of the person who appoints them expires. Any person on a budget, the budget committee or any committee serves at the pleasure of the council as a whole, so they can be removed if the council as a whole makes, you know, decides to do that, the same way as if an appoint, someone who is being appointed is not, the council doesn't agree with that appointment. So, and I think that actually happened not that long ago when the Councilor Kellum's appointments, he made an appointment and there was a vote and then he, I think he removed it at some point. So if you can, you know, the council can as a whole keep people off of committees and they can also remove people from committees, so.
So say I'm a new person coming on the council and the previous council person has an appointee here on the committee and I don't like that person. I personally can't...
You personally, you personally cannot remove them.
I have to get the council.
Correct.
That's correct. You mean from your friend.
So actually, you don't need to take action on this, it is just information only, but is there, is there any questions over it or?
It's just staggering, there's no big deal.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Next item would be potential vacation of Washington Street South of Highway 99. I think what we need is to have, you need to receive the report and you need to provide direct... direction to staff on if you want to proceed with this vacation. And Matthew's here. He'll walk you through it.
I didn't mean to surprise you. Good evening, council, or mayor and council. So I, as you indicated, I'm here to, right to you, there was a request for more information and investigate the feasibility of vacating a portion of Washington Street right-of-way, which lies south of Highway 99. So this right-of-way was created back in 1910 with the platting of Central Edition. There were lots and right-of-way associated with those lots. When Highway 99 came through, it ended up cutting a portion of that off, so you ended up with this little segment that you can actually see on the exhibit of Washington Street that was kind of a remainder hanging off the, would be kind of the southeast side of Washington, or Highway 99. So essentially, that is actually technically right-of-way. If council was interested in vacating that, the way the state law is written is, when right-of-way is vacated, it goes from the center line back out to the lots that was originally fronting it. As you can see on the exhibit, it gets a bit messy in that some of those little segments or leftover pieces would actually, you see a portion of that would go to, is actually, would go over to the Truax Oil Lots. There's multiple lots that were part of the original plat there, as well as the IOM property would get a small portion, as well as the Jiffy Lube, which I think is Jackson Thompson's piece. So it does create some problems there. As you can see, obviously, one property ends up owning a little sliver or triangle piece on the other side of the road, where it also, by doing that vacation, would create some access issues with the two properties that currently lie on the east side of Highway 99. So if council wanted to move forward with a vacation process, you know, staff would recommend, you know, talking to the property owners to make sure that there were some agreements in place, and then knowing that that was coming to kind of clean that up. You know, one potential scenario would be that the property owners do a lot-line adjustment that would essentially, you know, obviously, the little triangle piece for the Truax Oil property really probably doesn't serve them any use whatsoever. But then, obviously, the properties currently on the east side would, could reconfigure how that was split up between them that would make it a little bit more reasonable.
Do the property owners know anything about this now?
Well, this is an issue that I brought up. The property owners of ION and Thompson-Jackson are aware of it. In fact, those two property owners had verbally agreed to a lot-line adjustment, and they were aware that that would have to be done really in conjunction with the vacation. This is a curveball with the Truax Oil piece of it. But I guess my recommendation would be that staff proceed to work with them and try to work out. I think all the partners, well, I shouldn't say they're all agreeable to it, because the Truax Oil piece is a new wrinkle in it, but I'm gonna guess they don't even know that's their property across the road.
Yeah, I mean, they may not recognize that, you know, if that were to vacate, that they would end up with this little triangle piece, so that would be something that we certainly can talk to them about.
Or they could sell to the people on the other side of the road for some nominal fee. I mean, who's doing the paying for all this?
That also would be the question, you know, there would be fees associated with the lot-line adjustment, but, you know, obviously, that's the direction we'd be looking for.
I would think that it ought to be them that pays for it if they're the ones getting the benefits. Unless it does us some great amount of good, I don't see any reason for us to spend money on it. If there's something we need, okay, great, but if we don't need it, why spend the money on it?
Isn't it just to do some cleanup?
It technically is, would be just kind of cleaning up this remainder piece of right-of-way while the right-of-way is not needed by the city. Currently, it's in a state that's most likely maintained by these current property owners. So it is, to your point, Council Johnson, just is a cleanup exercise.
So they're probably mowing the grass, and they don't even know.
Yeah. It's mostly, I believe, mostly just asphalt, and there's a driveway approach right there.
So Matthew, have you talked to ODOT at all to see, has there been conversations with them to see if there's anything in the future they would rather us retain that in case they ever have to add an extra lane on the highway?
I'm unaware.
I think it might be best to make sure ODOT is on board with it.
You'd have a lot of other properties that they'd be working with at that time if they ever did that.
No, I mean, currently, today, kind of ask ODOT if, do you see anything in the future?
If they have any immediate plans?
It'd take two weeks to find out who to talk to.
Well, like you say, Jeff, if you look right to the south, there's the Arco Station. It's right up next to the road. What would ODOT's plan be for that?
Yeah, I mean, the right-of-way vacation is a land-use process, and so with that, there, I think there's inherently some notification to affected parties, of which ODOT would receive a notification. Kind of a compromise, this is a little bit complicated by the fact that all the things that have to happen either in conjunction with it or beforehand, as far as in an agreement, you have a mixed bag of how you've handled right-of-way vacations in the past. There's certainly been some where we've, we being the city, have initiated them and brought those through as a city-initiated right-of-way vacation, and then there's been others that people have submitted applications for. So a compromise approach, unless Matthew says this is a bad approach, might be that you go ahead and let the property owners submit their property line adjustment, get their agreements with the three different parties, submit a, excuse me, a parallel application for the right-of-way vacation. If you want to view this as a cleanup of a city issue, we can always waive the fee associated with the right-of-way vacation, and they're responsible for getting all their paperwork in order and putting it through the process. That might be a middle-of-the-road approach to let them take control of it, but also recognize that some cleanup happened there.
Does that work? Do you see any downside to that?
I think that'd be perfectly fine.
Well, if they're footing the bill for it, go for it, sort of, I'm concerned.
Well, as I stated in the last council meeting, this came up, that kind of reflects the way we've handled these in the past, my recollection. Most current, when I keep saying Golden West Mobile Homes, because I can't remember what the new name of it is, there was the one that Dr. Hagerty was involved in there on that.
Yeah, I can't remember what we, I mean, you had right-of-way vacations for Van Vliet. You had right-of-way vacations for the YMCA. There's been a number of them. I can't remember which ones city-initiated or vice versa, but certainly a history of taking some ownership in right-of-way vacations.
Well, I think that the common denominator in all those cases was, as Bessie said, to kind of clean things up. We've got these little odd pieces of property around town, in some cases, we didn't even know we had, or were like this one, who knew there were three owners there, so.
Yeah. And so currently, there wouldn't be three owners yet, but the minute that was vacated, that would create the ownerships on the other side.
It's going a little turn angle.
Then they could also call the assessments office to find out if there was something like this, if there, I think sometimes they will waive the fee also if it's just kind of, if it's a cleanup-type thing. Can't guarantee that, but I know sometimes they do.
Yeah, buddy.
So are there similar pieces of property at the end of Ferry Street and Calhoun Street? Blocks on each side?
I know that we had taken care of one a little bit farther south of this, down by Golden West earlier this year. I honestly, I'd have to check council.
And the Calhoun Street, wasn't it? And did the city just go ahead and do that?
Like I say, I could do some research into that, see if there's some that are still out there.
So I'd move that the city just go ahead and straighten this out and give the appropriate properties back, the appropriate land owners.
Counselor Olson, just a point of clarification. Some of the actions that have to take place are outside of, outside of the city's control. So while we'd be happy to provide that assistance, we really can't take an action on that until the three parties have an agreement in place that facilitates-
That's what I meant, have the city get the parties together, do the necessary work, straighten up. And correct me if I'm wrong, Matthew, but I think ION Enterprises owns the piece that's hatched in red.
Correct.
So it's not all the property that's identified that's part of the vacation. It's the blue and I think that little piece of yellow.
Correct. So the piece that's kind of highlighted, outlined in white is the actual right, the city right-of-way right now, and what they're trying to depict on this is-
It looks right past the white part.
Yeah. If the section that's highlighted in white were to be vacated, that being the city right-of-way, and we've shown with the colors where that would legally attach to, so you can see the ION portion in red there, they would get a portion of that right-of-way as well as with the Truax Oil, the yellow piece would actually attach to the property across Highway 99.
Thanks for that clarification.
So Dick made a motion, but Dick, did you want to kind of modify that motion then?
How does it need to be modified to satisfy your-
Well, it depends on if you liked my compromise that I proposed, which would be to let them submit their applications for both the lot-line adjustments and the right-of-way vacation, and then we would waive the right-of-way vacation fee associated with that.
Okay. As long as we're waiving the fees as we have in the past to so many other people, I would move to, as the engineer's proposed, the new motion.
I'll second it, just for discussion.
Okay. Move in a second, and then I, so what I'm saying is to let the property owners submit applications for lot-line adjustments. Is that what you're saying? And then, but the city waived the vacation fee.
They would submit all of the required applications, and we would work with them to get an application that would survive the process, and then they would have various fees associated with that for the property line adjustments and that, but we would waive the portion of the fees related to right-of-way vacation, just the same as if the city initiated it, as we have in some of the other cases. The property owners aren't paying that portion of the fee.
I would second that.
I think it's already been seconded. Yeah, Bessie did. So more discussion on the motion. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks.
Business from the council. Bessie, anything?
No, nothing today.
Okay. Bill? Dick? Rich?
Yeah. Today, jury came back for the county $1.4 billion for the county suit against the state. That's several counties altogether.
In favor of the counties?
Lynn County would probably-
In favor of the counties?
In favor of the county.
I think it was one point, they said all 1.1, 1.1 billion.
1.4 billion.
1.4 is what it was really for.
Oh, but they went for, but I thought the paper said 1.1, but I could be wrong.
Whatever.
Yeah. Over a billion.
We, yeah. We won, is what they said. I'm sure it will get-
Chopped up.
Taken to court again. That's just kind of standard for the courts, but anyway, there's some high-fiving and slapping of backs and that kind of thing happening at the county these days right now, so.
So is that 1.4 for all the counties?
Yes.
I think Lynn County's portion was just a little under $15 million, so.
15 million?
Yeah, just, it was like 14 million and change for Lynn County.
I think it was two parts. It was like a 50 and a 15.
It may have been.
For some reason, two parts.
Because it has about 20 percent of the forest land.
I was reading the DH's online-
So nobody's ever said, who, where does the money come from to pay for that?
State. Doesn't make any difference. Taxpayer.
So the state's, state's deficit of funds to provide programs?
Yeah, well, they didn't do what they said they were gonna do, and they found out in court that they have to.
State will probably ask us to help pay for it.
Could be.
Yeah.
Like purves.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Alex?
Oh, nothing today. Just busy.
Mike?
I'm deep in thought.
Okay.
Don't know. I think I'll let it go for now. Okay?
All right. And I did not have anything this evening. The only thing I do want to bring up, since the chief's back there, is I, you know, when we've been going through our budget times, I think it was quite, it was probably 10 years ago or so, and I kind of delved into information about the county on the sheriff's department has their patrol and investigation, and we do too. So actually, Albany taxpayers get double-dipped. We're paying for our own city portion of patrol and investigation, and we're paying for the county's portion, and we get, we don't get, we're not recipients of the county. But what I'm noticing almost, and when I looked at the amount of dollars back then was 4 million a year, that Albany taxpayers would've been paying into the sheriff's department. But what I'm seeing is almost weekly, is our police department having to respond to traffic collisions outside of our city limits out in the county? It seems like it's been about weekly there's been accidents. Do you know, chief?
I used to have that, I know.
Okay, just on, like, on the outskirts, you know, on there, so.
They should take all their stuff, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, because I, so when it comes on, the police department, when it says, like, A, on the pulse point, A 105 or 106, is that our patrol?
No, the county's.
The county's in. Okay, so.
So is the freeway property considered part of the city property?
Yeah. We respond to the freeway. If there's not a state trooper around, yeah.
Yeah. The freeway trooper comes to take it.
Okay. Yeah, so.
Mayor, some of those numbers could be us as well. We have an A 105, an A 106.
Oh, you do? Okay. So which vehicle would it be?
Those are the county chiefs. A 104, A 105, A 106 are the county chiefs.
Gotcha. Okay. Good to know. Thank you, chief. So, okay, that's it. That's just kind of my little rant when it comes to that funding between the city and the county, so.
I just wanted, Mayor, I wanted to take the opportunity, I sent you all an email earlier this week, and we talked about it today, and I wanted to commend Chief Latanzio again on the police department's attainment of their Calea certification last Saturday that was awarded, so, well done. I also wanted to remind you that tomorrow's Thanksgiving luncheon at the senior center, so if you can make it down there, perhaps help out. And then tomorrow evening is a community reception for our police chief candidates. And the last thing I wanted to do, if you'll indulge me, is read something here. This is a certificate of excellence presented to Albany, Oregon, for exceeding the standards established by the International City and County Management Association in the identification and public reporting of key outcome measures, surveying of both residents and employees, and the pervasiveness of performance management and the organization's culture. It was presented at the 105th ICMA Annual Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, on 21st of October 2019, and it was presented by Mark Ott, ICMA's executive director, and Karen Pinkos, ICMA president. And if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, I'd like you to present this to Jorge Salinas, who's really the one who's instrumental in that accomplishment, so.
It's really a city effort. I'm just bleeding out.
Thank you, Peter.
Great.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Jorge. Wonderful job, so. Okay. Anything else?
We had, we had a caller, people came in, and I'm wondering if they had any business for the council, or just came to watch. While we're done, so.
Good timing.
Yeah. Marylyn, anything? Staff have anything? Okay. Our next meeting, because of the holiday, coming up, is gonna be December 2nd, work session, December 4th, regular session, with that word jury.